Took three tries. Thank you. I now call this a regular meeting in the Board of Education to order at 7:04 PM. We'll take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'll have the coordinator call the roll.
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mr. Rollins?
Here.
Mr. Scovano?
Here.
Ms. McCulloch?
Here.
Mr. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Escobedo?
Here.
Sorry. With seven present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I'd like to thank Rod Widdell and Connor Childers, who are in the back behind the scenes producing our broadcasts on Channel 20 on Comcast. So, thank you guys for being here. We will now take this time to recognize and celebrate outstanding contributions of our students and staff. Mr. Earl Dotson Jr. has the floor.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Board members. It's always exciting when we have outstanding student athletes amongst us. And first up, we have IHSA Girl Swimming, Auburn High School sophomore, Ally Cushing, and Guilford High School freshman, Ella Gasparini. Both competed in the IHSA State Finals Meet for Girl Swimming and Diving. Ally competed in the 200-yard freestyle, and Ella competed in the 200-yard individual medley. According to the Rockford Sports Coalition, Ally is the first Auburn swimmer to qualify for the state final meet. Congratulations. Please join me in congratulating these students. They both are here.
Great job. Very proud of you. Wonderful. Great job. Way to go.
All right? Third Hood Marshall School's 7th grade girls' basketball team went 18-0 in the regular season and won both the RRC regular season and tournament titles before heading to the state tournament. The Mustangs lost in the quarterfinals of the IESA Class 3A Basketball Tournament to another undefeated team. The team finished the season with 18 wins and only one loss, and took 5th in the state. Please join me in congratulating these outstanding students and their accomplishment.
Well done. Congratulations. Very proud of you. Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. Very proud of you. Congratulations. Way to go. Excellent. Great job. Great job.
And now we have IESA Cheer, Eisenhower Middle School and Lincoln Middle School. Both, yeah, all right.
Yeah.
Both sent teams to compete in the IESA Cheerleading State Championships in January. Eisenhower had a great showing in the small-team routine cheer division and placed 15th among 23 teams. Lincoln took 2nd place in the IESA Small Team Cheer Division and made RPS 205 history.
Yeah.
Woo! Yeah, yeah. Give it up. Give it up. The runner-up designation marks the first time an RPS 205 school placed at the state tournament. Please join me congratulating the cheer teams from Eisenhower and Lincoln.
Right. Great job. Congratulations. Way to go. Well done. Well done. Good job. Congratulations. Way to go. Excellent. Very proud of you. Congratulations. Way to go. Wonderful. So proud of you guys. Way to go. All right. Good job. Amazing. You gonna do a cheer for us? All right. I think you should. Way to go. Congratulations. Good job. Wonderful. Wonderful. Way to go. Very proud of you. Go Loggers. All right. Congratulations. Way to go. Thank you.
And last, and certainly not least, as is customary, let's give it up to all of the coaches of all the teams. Coaches? I also saw some principals in the house. Just give it up to our principals. And we all know how important it is to have the support of your family. So, parents, aunts, uncles, grandparents, nieces, nephews, just give it up. All our family. Thank you, sir. That is all.
Great job. Always fun and exciting to recognize our students and staff. We will now move on to the petitions and communications portion of our meeting when we invite the public to make comments. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be a time at regular and special meetings for public comments. Thus, we are following those mandates during petitions and communications portions of our agenda. According to Board Policy 2.230, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to a total of 30 minutes. The Board will not respond to comments at this time. If it is appropriate, you'll be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. In order to allow for sufficient time for the business of the Board and to conduct our meetings in an efficient and effective manner, we are requesting that you comply with the guidelines that are posted, and each speaker will be allowed no more than two minutes to address the Board. It's not appropriate to address individual Board members or individual administrators or discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. I will call two names, and the first person would come up to the microphone, and the second one would move towards the front, and we can save time that way. We also have a clock on the wall to help you with the two minutes, and we thank you for your interest and your cooperation with our guidelines. So, our first speaker tonight is Mayor Tom McNamara, to be followed by Stan Jones.
You passed the skills test. All right, okay. To think, I didn't even graduate RPS. So, first, I just want to say a sincere thank you to the Board and your entire leadership team and all the teachers. I have this awesome opportunity as mayor of the City of Rockford to go out to schools, and I'm impressed with each and every school I go to. So, thank you for your self-estimation to our city. Secondly, I want to talk to you very briefly tonight about the really innovative sponsorship initiative that's before you this evening. I'm going to be a little bit selfish and talk to you about this sponsorship initiative from a Board point of view that I'm on. I'm on Alignment Rockford's Board, who's been a strong supporter of Rockford Public Schools and really helped build connections between our business community and our students. I really believe that this sponsorship initiative, it has an opportunity for creating a sustainable revenue source for organizations, but I think the most important thing to me is it has an opportunity to really build off the great work that's already being done to support our youth. It has this opportunity to build mentorship opportunities, job shadowing opportunities, capstone class work opportunities for our students. And I think what better way than when someone walks through those school doors and walk down our hallways to see different businesses in our community there supporting and visibly supporting our students. Again, if this is to pass, I will stand here and tell you, I'll be the first to sign up to be the first sponsor and have the City of Rockford lead the charge. And lastly, I just want to say again, thank you. I know the work that you do with selfless serving on the Board and really appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mayor. Did I make it into two minutes? You did. You got 16 seconds left. Stan Jones, to be followed by Peggy Mosely.
Mosely.
Mosely, okay. Sorry? Is Stan Jones here?
I'm right here.
Okay. Oh, there you are. Okay.
Thank you for having me up here. I appreciate it. The last time I was up here was three years ago, somewhat the same reason. I am a bus driver, and I've been a RPS 205 bus driver for seven and a half years. It is an extremely gratifying and challenging job. I owned my own business for 21 and a half years before I became a bus driver. Every day, I get to meet some very interesting and exceptional students, and at many of the stops, the parents. We have developed great relationships through the years, and I hope to continue that. In many cases, as I said before, many cases, the drivers are the first contact many parents have with the district. We are also the face of this district for many parents. They ask us what's going on, is there school tomorrow, and we discuss challenges on the bus with maybe their child or just how good their children are doing. We, as a group, really are dedicated to this district and to this city and the children of this city. I do hope we get to continue in this capacity for the foreseeable future.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Peggy Mosely, to be followed by Elizabeth Christiansen.
Hi, thank you.
Sorry for butchering your last name.
Oh, it's okay. I've been a bus driver for 23 years. I agree with Stan, the rapport that we have with the children is outstanding. We do have our problem students, but we mostly have a lot of trust and we have a lot of good relationships with our children. I truly believe that outsourcing is going to be an injustice to the school district and to the children. I have been, we've had a program in line since 1999, which is, it's called Bus Safety. We go around to the middle schools, and then we also go around to the elementary schools. We teach the kids on how to be safe on the inside and the outside of the bus. We explain the rules, and we have a lot of one-on-one with them when we go through this and a lot of questions. And even though they may not ride the bus every day, there are field trips that they go on. So, it is very important that all children need to know what are the safety guidelines for inside and outside the bus. We also want to make sure that, like with the middle schoolers, that they know about how to be with the passes, because a lot of them, especially with the 6th graders, they have no idea how it works. So, we explain all that to them. So, again, we have a really good rapport with our kids, and I would like to maintain that and hope that you will allow us to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Elizabeth, and to be followed by Stacy Owens.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Christiansen. I'm not here to talk on the bus drivers today. I'm here to talk to you guys about your third-party outsourcing for subs. And I know that as a union president, we don't represent the subs, but we, our retirees are affected by the policy that is in this, the information you guys got today. Because the district traditionally brought paraprofessionals back at the rate they were making when they retired to ensure qualified retirees will remain in sub and positions where they retired from to help support the most vulnerable students with the highest needs in our school district. So, I'd like you to look at doing that the same as you have in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy Owens, to be followed by Christopher Hoosier.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Owens. I live in Loves Park. I am here tonight to ask the members of the Board, please do not privatize the school buses. I've been a bus driver for 21 years. And yes, our kids know us, the parents know us, and we need our jobs. I'm asking the Board, please do not privatize. It's not safe for the kids. I mean, this is how we all take care of our families. So, I'm asking that you please, please vote no to privatize us. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Hoosier, to be followed by Darrell Freeman.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Hoosier. I'm a staff representative with AFSCME Council 31, the union that represents the Rockford school bus drivers. As you heard, these drivers live in this community, they know this community, they're accountable to this community, and the value of the job that they do for this community cannot be overstated. They know the kids, they know the families, they know the roads, they count their jobs to pay their bills and provide for their own families. These are skilled jobs. These deserve family-supporting wages and good benefits. And good jobs for the district means less turnover, more experienced drivers, and fewer vacancies, which creates better service. Private contractors will make promises and say anything when they're looking for your business. And Rockford is not the first place to privatize their school bus services. The record across the country and across this state is clear. Privatization hurts kids. It hurts the workers and puts our community's safety at risk and is less costly. According to a two-decade-long independent study of school districts that privatized, the taxpayers are under hook for $224,000 more. It costs $224,000 more a year for those school bus services. Districts across the country are canceling these contracts with outside vendors because of increased cost, as well as driver shortages and unsatisfactory service. Here in Illinois, just one example, in Vandelia, they canceled their contract with a private vendor in 2015, following a string of four accidents consecutive in a very short period of time. Safety must be a major concern. According to the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration, first student, one of the companies I understand to have offered a proposal, has cited over 3,100 times violations, safety violations, has been involved in 885 crashes resulting in seven fatalities and 863 injuries. Much of this was due to disrepair of the buses, including brakes and brakes that should be out of service.
Thank you, Chris. I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you very much for your time.
Darrell Freeman, to be followed by Katina Barnett.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Darrell Freeman. I live here in Rockwood. I am, I live here in Rockwood. I am here tonight to ask the members of the school board to listen to the community of Rockwood needs jobs and our kids need safe transportation. I have been a professional school bus driver for five years. I know the importance of having to drive and care for the safety of our kids, and I take pride in my job. And I see the parents every day, and the kids respect us, and they show up, and when they show up, they like, "Good morning, Mr. Freeman." And they, you know, we get a bond with these kids, and we've helped build self-esteem with these kids. You know, when we pick up kindergartens in the beginning of the year, they're all nervous, they're scared. By the time we're done with them, I get some parents come to me and say, "Thank you, Mr. Freeman. I don't know what you did to my kids," but I see a big difference in them. And so, I come to you and say, "Outsourcing is not the key. We need to find a better way to do this, and we need our jobs. These people have kids in schools, and we gotta do, we gotta do something to get this right." And that's all I got to say on that.
Thank you. Katina Barnett, to be followed by Christina Lee.
Good evening. My name is Katina. I live in Rockford. I live on the south side of town. I've been a bus driver for 20-plus years, and I'm asking you to say no to privatization. I know, I know my parents, I know my students. I've been driving so long that I have driven the children of my former students. So, that should speak volumes here. This is our community. This is the 815 community. We are part of this 815 community. Without a doubt, we are 815 community strong. The only thing I can say more than anything is privatizing is not community. We are community. We, without a doubt, are the 815 strong. So, the only thing I can say at the end is let's keep this community strong.
Thank you. Christina Lee.
Hi, my name is Christina Lee, and I've been a bus driver for RPS 205 for over 13 years. I'm also one of many that will be leaving if you decide to outsource. I'm assuming that you're all college-educated people, yet you still can't seem to figure out that if you privatize the drivers, you lose the best drivers you got. 13, 15, 18, 20-plus years we've been here, and despite what you think or feel about us, we're here every day, we care about these kids, and we do our job to the highest level of professionalism that can be done. I truly hope these companies that you're considering have at least 200 drivers sitting in reserve, fingerprinted, background-checked, drug-tested, and ready to go, because I promise you, you're going to need every last one of them. None of us that have given years of experience and dedication to this district will ever stay and work for another company. You must be smart enough to realize that good experienced drivers will never work for these companies, take a cut or a comparable wage, worse benefits than what we have now, no seniority, et cetera, et cetera. We will simply pack up our CDLs, our many years of service, our value and our worth, and go where we're appreciated. The massive mess that you'll be left with will be exactly what you deserve. We, as drivers, should not have to play these outsourcing games with you every time negotiations is on the table or on the horizon. You should be ashamed for even considering this as an option, but then still in the same breath, claim to care about the kids in this district. The absolute fact that you cannot run without us should tell you, your time and effort would be much better served in one of our countless other areas within the district instead of constantly plotting and planning another way to prove to us drivers how very little that we mean to this school board. I'll end with this quote, "Life is short. Work somewhere, you're continuously accepted, respected, encouraged, inspired, and empowered and valued." Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Thank you. That's our last public speaker, so I want to thank you all for your interest and your cooperation with our guidelines, and I would like to, at this time, ask the Board members if they have any comments at this time. Nope? Okay. We are moving the superintendent's report up in the agenda tonight to allow for a couple of presentations, and Dr. Jarrett?
I will immediately cede the floor to Mr. Zetico, followed by Ms. Yar.
Good evening. Well, I'm here to present the 2018-19 Health Plan Cost and Initiative Summary for the Board. We'll cover 1819, but there will also be a summary and a look forward to what we expect in the next year. So, what we have before you is a rundown from FY11 all the way through FY18 in terms of a per employee, per year cost for our medical plan. You will see that from 11 to 18, it is just over 12% increase. That is about an average of 1.5% per year. But if you take that against the medical inflation during that same time period, that is anywhere between 5 and 8%. So, we are really doing a great job in terms of keeping our medical costs at bay compared to inflation. We are currently running, right now, at 2019 at about a 3% higher rate for per employee per year than in FY2018. I do apologize, there's a typo. It has a per employee per month on this slide. It should be per employee per year. So, I apologize for that typo. What you have here is, again, that trend of expected trend of 6.5%, so against medical inflation, we took the middle, and just put it in graph form in terms of where we're at and where we are actual with Rockford. Again, I guess this is just another illustration where we have kept our medical costs relatively flat the last several years. We saw a dip and a little bit of an increase in '16, but ever since '16, we have kept our medical costs pretty flat, and again, against the trend, which is actually really impressive work by everybody involved. Here we have a graph that shows actual costs versus what we budgeted. This does only go back to 2015. Prior to that, the medical benefits wasn't separated out in terms of budget. It was included in other items, so we didn't have really clean numbers. So, that's why it only goes back to 2015, where we started separating out and budgeting separately for our medical costs. But you can see in 2015, the actual per employee per month, year, excuse me, was below, quite a bit below what was budgeted. You can see in 2016, 27, 2018, we've done a much better job of predicting what our potential costs are going to be. So, this has allowed us to budget more accurately and then divert dollars to other initiatives and other areas of the organization rather than just have them sitting back in potential medical costs. So, what are some of the factors that have contributed to the trend in terms of maintaining and having lower costs? We've certainly done some adjustment with member contributions. Humana used to be a network provider, and that has since been removed. With our Express scripts, we have a coverage management program, which has different components to it, whether it's the quantity amount, a tiered approach coverage, or an authorization, so that is reduce some of our spend on prescriptions. We have improved some of our prescription rebates, and we've added specialty office visit co-pay. Specifically in 2018-19, our wellness initiatives continue. We see more participation in our wellness, both with our risk assessment and our overall participation. Again, we have, we've instituted a higher emergency room co-pay. We expanded our Teladoc, which is the virtual, to all teachers, which has helped contribute to keeping the costs down in terms of claims. And again, we updated our prescription contract, and we're going to see greater rebates with that contract. What are some potential risks or causes that we potentially may have for 2019-20? At this time, we have only some minor changes in our, in our plan design to offset trend. Specialty medication is one that we are concerned and we are keeping an eye on. It is up to almost a third of our total RX spend, and you will see that special medications are really only 1% of the scripts dispensed, but yet are a third of the cost. And so, that is something that we really need to keep our eye on in terms of rising costs with our prescriptions. Again, we are looking at medical inflation to be somewhere between 6, 6.5%, and we do have some potential large claims that may impact us for next year. What are, what are some things that we're looking at in terms of cost reductions or to keep costs down? We are still looking at additional plan designs to help combat some of that inflation and expected costs. We are going to embark in working with our union partners for some additional health care options, and then the Board just approved our updated chronic care management program that will allow access for more employees who qualify to access this service. So, looking forward to 1920, we are projecting an approximately a $50 million budget. This does not include trip, so retirement does not include employee contributions, and we looked at that based on an average of just over 3,000 employees in the medical plan. Questions? Mr. Rollins?
Mr. Rollins. Couple of questions on the prescription drugs. One, I remember, and it's been a number of years ago now when we did a drug audit, a prescription drug audit, and, you know, there were some findings that came out of that audit, and we had a discussion at the time about whether that was something we should be doing on a fairly regular basis, but it seems like it's been quite a while since we've done that. So, I mean...
We are still looking at additional plan designs to help combat some of that inflation and expected costs. We are going to embark in working with our union partners for some additional healthcare options. And then the board just approved our updated chronic care management program that will allow access for more employees who qualify to access this service. So looking forward to '19 and '20, we are projecting an approximately a $50 million budget. This does not include TRIP, so retirement does not include employee contributions. And we looked at that based on an average of just over 3,000 employees in the medical plan. Questions?
Mr. Rollins.
Couple of questions on the prescription drugs. One, I remember, and it's been a number of years ago now when we did a drug audit, a prescription drug audit, and, you know, there were some findings that came out of that audit, and we had a discussion at the time about whether that was something we should be doing on a fairly regular basis. But it seems like it's been quite a while since we've done that. So, I mean, the amusing one that came out of it was somebody who had a Viagra prescription that he would have had to take in like three pills a day or something like that.
Correct. Yep. That's exactly when I--
So have we done another audit? Or do we have another audit scheduled?
Correct. I will, I'd have to actually refer to Michael Parsons and our Williams Manning in terms of the audit. The audit was done prior to me coming on board, so it has been at least three years. But I'll let Michael Parsons answer that question.
If I remember correctly, we're probably all four years out. We've actually begun discussions on looking at if we should bring somebody in and do this. Usually about every three years is a good time to do that, so you are correct. It is actually time to do that. We've begun those discussions. There have been some other bid operations that have been going on that I think that have slowed us down a little bit. But with the spend of that $7 to $8 million, it definitely is something we should be doing and hopefully soon.
And then also on prescription drugs. So we had the discussion last year as well about the specialty drugs, and, I mean, you're saying you're keeping your eye on them. Is there anything that people are doing out there to try to control those costs?
Nothing definitive right now. The biggest challenge that we run into with any specialty medication situation is these drugs are highly effective. They work very well. They are miracle drugs. They do incredible things, but they are very, very expensive. Some of the things that we're really working with is we have situations, and again, these are, when we talk about these things, because it's 1% of the medication, 1% of the people, third of the cost, so they're very, they're very specific things that can help. One of the things that we see is medications that are being dispensed in a hospital where we could potentially pull them out of the hospital and get them done somewhere else. We had a situation where there was a medication that was being dispensed out of a hospital. It was a half a million dollars for the medication. We were being charged an additional $700,000 to have that administered at the hospital. If we can pull that out of the hospital, have that administered in a third-party location with all the things that you need otherwise, we could have potentially cut a half a million dollars out of that cost. So those are the types of things that we're looking at. There aren't a ton of options out there right now because unless you're going to start telling people they can't have these medications, that limits what you can do. The other thing that we're working with is we're working with the ESI to come up with strategies on how we can potentially negotiate for these medications. And so choosing a strong PBM that has strong negotiating power with the provider, with the manufacturers of these special medications is probably the thing that we're doing the most right now to help deliver opportunities for savings and control these costs. But it's very clear, this is going to get worse before it gets better. These medications come out, they're very high cost. They do start to come down fairly quickly. One of the medications that we use as an example of this is the hepatitis C medications that were out there. When they first came out about five years ago, they were running about $125,000 for a three-month prescription. When you were done, you were cured. That's actually down to about $67,000, while $67,000 isn't cheap. It's certainly better than $125,000 we were paying before. And again, that comes into working with our PBMs, choosing our best partner so that they can negotiate well and give us the best prices for these medications. I don't know if that's the best answer, but that's probably where we are right now.
If you go, if you go back long ago enough, 15, 20, 25 years ago, drug plans were separate from health plans, and then they somehow all got combined. I know, like, in Medicare, there's different drug plans, and they cost, and they cost different. Is there any possibility of doing something like that with private health plans these days, where we're having different drug plans where you have access to different medications and pay more?
So right now, in working with the PBMs, I think along the lines, and that's--
So PBM?
You bet. I'm sorry. A PBM is a pharmacy benefit manager, and actually, when you look at some of this, we actually have a separate drug plan right now. Our drug plan stands outside of the medical plan in that we work with the ESI, and almost all the medications are run through express scripts that are filled at a pharmacy. The only ones that would come outside of express scripts would be those that are dispensed at a hospital or through a doctor's office because they have to be administered by a medical professional. So these pharmacy benefit managers do kind of stand outside of that. Even within Blue Cross, they don't do their own pharmacy benefit. They actually have that out to a group called Prime Therapeutics, which is their outside PBM or this pharmacy benefit manager. So, you know, as we take a look at that, I actually like the fact that there's all these pharmacy benefit managers out there because it brings competition into the marketplace, and that's something that I think helps to bring costs down and then really trying to make sure we align ourselves with the best opportunity. Whether or not, the other thing that's happening is we do see exclusionary formularies in that a formulary is the drug list that any PBM pharmacy benefit manager comes up with and where they place those drugs, tier one, tier two, tier three. And sometimes if you have situations where there are drugs that are available in tier two and tier three that do the same thing, they may exclude another drug because of its cost, where they don't offer it at all. And so we're starting to see some of that, which does help us to be able to control some of those costs. Some of that is also driving the better rebates that we get because we do have an exclusionary formulary where some things are left out. But when there is only one medication that does that one thing or does it that way, most people don't have the stomach to tell somebody that we're just going to, we're going to cut that medication out. And when we're talking about these medications, again, less than 1% of your population, a third of your, of your spend, I mean, we could start cutting, cutting those medications out, but these are life-changing medications. And so aside from completely taking something away, I'm not sure that there's anything else that can be done at this point outside of what we're trying to do with the PBMs and maybe potentially looking at some things we could do with the manufacturers.
And then last question, another kind of audit that we've done in the past is a dependent audit, and it seems like it's been a few years since we've done one of those. Are we going to be doing that at any point in the future?
It has been a little while since we've done that. One of the things, though, that we did after we did that dependent eligibility audit was tighten up what you require as people come onto the plan. So we had not done a dependent eligibility audit before, and so once we did that, and then we started looking for brochure certificates, marriage certificates, things that would identify and verify that people belonged on the plan. And so if you're holding that a little bit tighter, you don't need to do a dependent eligibility audit quite as often. Usually, I wouldn't do it more than every five years. So it's probably been four to five years at least since we've done that last audit. So if the district wanted to take a look at that, there could potentially be some opportunities. They are looking for people who, you know, in that situation, it could be somebody who was covering a child, and that child is no longer eligible on the plan from a divorce situation or something like that, or a grandparent who had a child, and they're no longer guardianship. Somebody who was married and then is no longer married, but somehow their spouse may have ended up on the plan. So it's a little bit more narrow, the people that we're looking for, because there are better controls on who comes onto the plan initially.
Thanks. Other board member questions? I just want one, Matt, if you would. So on your last slide, so the monthly employee count of 3,051, so that's the number of employees that are, we have covered under our health plans.
Correct. Does not include their dependents or anything, but that's the actual employees.
And the 50, and the 50 million for next school year is the total cost to the district.
Correct. Correct. It doesn't include the contributions. That's what we're going to budget for because we cannot predict what the employee contributions are going to be.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Mrs. Yar, I think, are you next?
Yes. Mrs. Sather is actually going to present, but I just want to give you a little background on why we are presenting. We don't typically bring a public hearing notice forward with a presentation, but because this is unusual in nature, we don't, if we haven't typically done a budget amendment, I wanted to be transparent with what we were trying to accomplish with this budget amendment, and so I thought a presentation would be helpful. But that'll turn over to Ms. Sather.
Good evening.
Thank you for being here.
So again, tonight, we are bringing forward a resolution designating a public hearing and directing the notice to be published for FY '19 budget amendment. A budget amendment is required if the anticipated expenditures are going to be greater than our originally adopted budget and must follow the same budget approval process. So why a budget amendment? We're asking for this due to the receiving of our evidence-based funding later in our fiscal year '18 and not having the sufficient time to properly plan and utilize those funds before our fiscal year was over. So essentially, those additional funds rolled up into our operating fund balance. So here's a look at our projected FY '19 fund balance. At the beginning of the year, we had $174.5 million with the anticipated capital budget spend down of $31.8 million and our projected 2.3 operating surplus for FY '19. An additional $5.5 million of additional spending, which we'll go through on the next slide. Our ending projected fund balance for FY '19 is projected to be $139.5 million. So here's our proposed spend request with the goal of having resources available for students at the beginning of the '19-'20 school year. We can see here we have instructional materials, smart boards, playgrounds, security system upgrades, facility repairs, hiring incentives, and musical instruments, all totaling $5.5 So these requests will allow us to spend on our fund balance, take pressure off of our FY '20 budget, and also align our resources that meet our student needs. Here's a summary of the budget adjustment or amendment. The top three lines are revisions that are needed for additional grant dollars that we've received and also to realign funds so that we were able to purchase our facilities building. And the top, the next two are our actual fund balance requests summarized by fund totaling that $5.5 million. We anticipate using our $2.3 million projected surplus to cover some of that, so our net decrease in our fund balance will be approximately $3.2 million. Here's another look at our fund balances from 2017 to our projected '19 ending. You can see in '17, from '17 to '18, our operating fund balance in the blue increased, and from '18 to '19, we're projected to have a slight decrease. The line in the middle is our board policy requirement to have at least 25% of our expenditures in our fund balance, so we can see that we're still meeting that policy. And related to return on investment, we really just, again, want to have the student resources and school improvements available at the beginning of our next school year. So reporting back, we will, we will be reporting back on our back-to-school report, really detailing if the devices were available at the beginning of the school year, were the school improvements completed, and were the hiring incentives successful. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions for Michelle? Mr. Rollins?
So if I'm understanding this correctly, we're projecting a $2.3 million surplus, but we're going to spend an additional $5.5 million? So we're amending the budget to do a--
Our $3.2 million. Basically, our balance, fund balance spend down, so yes, you're correct.
So, okay, we can cover, of that $5.5 million request that we're asking for, we can cover that with part of our surplus this, this year because we have vacancies, as I reported in the treasurer's report. We have those vacancies. We have interest revenue that has increased. So in order for us to spend those dollars, we still need to amend the budget, but we can cover with some of that with the projected fund balance or net increase of fund balance.
I guess, you know, the, the board typically has been pretty clear, in the past anyway, about doing a balanced budget, so I'm a little concerned about amending the budget, which was a balanced budget, to become an unbalanced budget.
Right. And so, Mr. Rollins, I think what we are looking at is late-arriving funds that came in the previous fiscal year that came late enough that it would be difficult for us to invest those. We're looking at a one-time investment rather than a reoccurring cost because the state decided to, did not resolve the evidence-based funding issue until about April of the previous fiscal year, which resulted in some additional dollars that came in place. So you really have to look at this over a three fiscal year, over two different fiscal years. That was, that was our thought, that it would be good to make these investments, which would then free up dollars to invest in schools moving forward in FY '20. That was our strategy.
Yeah, and I should remember, but I don't. Where did we land last fiscal year?
So the middle, the middle slide here shows our FY '18 fund balance, which is approximately, our operating fund balance, about $137 million.
No, but what was the surplus?
You can see the delta from '17 to '18, Mr. Rollins. And again, that, that was because of very late-arriving changes that were pretty significant in state funding.
Okay. Well, if we could just get that number for what the surplus was last year.
I, I have here about, and, and we might have to recheck my numbers because I kind of did this later in the game anticipating this question, but I have here that the '17 operating fund balance, sorry, let me grab it here. So the surplus was about $15 million for operating.
For the last fiscal year?
Between '17 and '18, the blue bar there goes up about, approximately $15 million.
And again, that's because $8.5 million in evidence-based funding arrived in late April.
All right.
And technically, when we get additional funding, let's say our grants are higher than what we budgeted, in order to spend that, instead of going over budget, we would really want to do a budget amendment to be transparent and to actually follow the ISB guidelines. I know we haven't typically done that in the past, but to be technically correct, we should be doing that.
Mrs. McCullough?
So this is, would come forward to us as a vote to change or amend the budget, but for each of the requests, they'll come forward separately to be discussed. Because, I, these, the playgrounds, we're already looking at. We're not voting on those today. So we're voting on those today, but we're not amending the budget for them until after. This isn't on the, interesting.
And I think what's different here is this has not been our past practice to amend the budget, so we're adding a different, a higher level of transparency here to be very upfront with the board about what, what kind of systemic changes we're making here in, rather than just covering it within the fund balance within this fiscal year.
I'm just order of things. It would be nice to amend it and then bring that back, is all. Thank you. And the school security system upgrades, is that coming to us too? We haven't gotten that yet, have we? Okay.
One thing in common, we're just really trying to prioritize one-time expenditures because of the nature of the funds. It's not a recurring fund balance. It, it's more of a one-time, a late-arriving fund, so that's why you see things that are one-time investments rather than recurring staffing costs, for example.
Mrs. Holdley?
I just wanted to respond on the playground. The reason for that is because of a grant, so, so that we don't miss out on the grant. It's due on March 12th.
Any other questions? Thank you. Oops. I just logged myself out. Okay. Didn't mean to do that. All righty, we will now move on to the consent portion of our agenda, including the following items. The meeting minutes of February 12, 2019, payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders, contracts under $10,000, construction bid requests, log, and travel. We had no bid recommendations or no recurring contracts this time. The other consent items include the following: the resolution and notice of public hearing on the amended budget for 2018-19, the monthly investment report for January 2019, the financial results for January 2019, the MOU for the multi-classroom leader differential and reach team leader differential, the MOU for the reclassification of high school office professionals, the substitute nurse allocation and pay, new school construction change order logs, the RPS management work change order report, and the freedom of information log. Is there a motion and a second to approve these consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Are there any consent items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll. On the approval of the consent items.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
With seven yeses, the motion passes.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the closed session consent agenda, including the following: the resolution authorizing dismissal of probationary teachers, the resolution authorizing dismissal of temporary and part-time teachers, the HR organizational report and addendum, and the closed session consent items for student discipline. Unless otherwise modified below, the board adopts and accepts the hearing officer's findings and recommendations in the following cases in which students expelled or suspended are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. Student 4251 and student 4254 are expelled through the remainder of this school year, the '18-'19 school year, and student 4255 and student 4256 are expelled through the end of the 2019-20 school year. And the following students received expulsions and abeyance. Student 1041, 3759, 3760, 3761, 3762, 3763, student 3764, 3765, 3766, and 3767. And-- and-- 3762, 3763, student 3764, 3765, 3766, and 3767, and, and student 3768. Is there a motion and a second to approve these closed session consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Are there any items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll. On the approval of the closed session consent items?
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
And then Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Thank you.
With, with seven yeses, the motion passes, sorry.
We are now on to action items, and our first item tonight is the fiscal year 2019 second quarter Treasurers Report that was presented by Mrs. Yar at our last board meeting. Is there a motion and a second to approve this item?
Second.
Is there a mo...
Oh, I thought I heard that.
Oh. So moved. Moved by Mr. Connor? Did it, Mr. Siegel, did you go first?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Rollins. Mr. Rollins, I'm sorry. I didn't, I just have a half, and I'll look to the right, not to the left. My fault. So we have a motion by Mr. Rollins and a second by Mr. Connor. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the Treasurers Report.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo? Okay. Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one absent.
Thank you. Our second item for action tonight is the middle school English language arts resource adoption that Mrs. Neri presented last board meeting. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, I, I mean, I expressed my concerns about this last time, and I guess I want to articulate them in a little bit different fashion. I, I'm concerned that we are, and it's not that I've got a concern with the resource, I'm, I've got a concern in the way we implement things. So we just went through an implementation of integrated literacy, which did not go well, and which resulted in a dip in our test scores, and it looks to me like we're doing exactly the same thing here. We're implementing a major overhaul, we're doing a lot of things at once, and I can pretty much guarantee you, we're going to see a dip in the test scores as a result. Maybe long-term, it's the right thing to do, but I, I guess I'd like to see some commitment from the administration that, not just that we pick the right program, but that we figure out how to implement it in a way that teachers are trained on it, that they're brought along, that they're invested in it, that they'll actually do what they're supposed to be doing with the new, and learn how to use a new program, be able to implement it, so we don't see these implementation dips that we're seeing when we, when we do these things. And I, I don't know whether to vote for this or not, because we're all focused on increasing the test scores, and we're about to all vote for something which, I will guarantee you, is going to result in lower test scores over the next couple of years, while teachers digest it and figure out how to implement it.
Anyone from administration want to respond to that, or? I don't think Mrs. Neri is here tonight. Oh, sure she is. You want to, would you like to respond to that?
Well, Mrs. Neri is coming up to, to respond. I, I think that it is really important that, for all curriculum rollouts, that we are very intentional about how we prepare teachers, and I think we've learned a lot of those lessons in terms of, what can we do to make sure that teachers have the proper time to plan to use the new resources, and that we, we build that time in, that we give them exposure to the new resources, and in this case, I think another issue that Mr. Rollins has appropriately brought up is the importance of shifting to different planning techniques around the block schedule. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Neri to talk about some of the contingencies we have in place to make sure that the teachers that did not participate in the pilot have the opportunity to do that.
Right, so, in terms of professional learning for our teachers, we are currently in the process of planning some time for our May 3 SIP day, and we're working collaboratively with our middle school principals and our schools team to make sure that, that is successful in order to give them that initial exposure, not necessarily to the resource, but to the instructional practices that need to shift in their classroom, in order to support the block schedule and differentiating for their students. Then we're also working on, you know, initial planning around then our summer, our August Institute days, around how to support those teachers as well. We are also then working on an additional position for our middle schools that do not have them this year, the curriculum implementation leader for 6th through 8th grade language arts, so that way we can continue to build that support in, that job-embedded support, and that person is the PLC leader, as well as a, you know, early, or a model implementer, and then also, you know, works on supporting their teachers through the process of focusing on assessment data in order to shift their instruction to support that. So that's where we are right now with those initial, you know, that initial planning to support our teachers as they're moving to this new instructional shift.
Thank you, Mrs. Neri, and the other thing I would just like to add is ultimately, our principals will have recommended this resource adoption. We saw support from Eisenhower in particular at the last meeting, but across the board, they are supporting this, and ultimately, our principals are going to be accountable for that, and as the superintendent, I will be accountable for that, in terms of making this resource adoption. We, we have very ambitious targets for what we expect of our schools and also the district results, and I think Mr. Rollins' concerns are well-taken, but I ultimately think, ultimately the risk on implementation dip needs to be borne by the administration and specifically by the superintendent, and, you know, I'm, I feel like in order to support the people who are making these decisions in the process, that responsibility ultimately falls on my shoulder.
Mr. Connor?
If I remember correctly, wasn't this the one where last time, we had the teachers right up front here, and, and they spoke to it? So the question that might come to mind is, what was the involvement of the teachers? And it sounds like both from the pilot standpoint and the planning, that they have been a big part of this.
Correct.
So that's first part for me. I think the second part is, I also appreciate the concern. It sounds a little inherent with how education goes, if I might say so. So I think it speaks more to something that was pointed out last time, which is, there's some large expenditures that are being done, and I think if we do have a dip, and it's something we know, and we kind of know it's going to happen, I think what I would say is that having the plan and the accountability means that we would expect to hear about it, and the expectations I have is that there's always something with new curriculum that is not going to be easy. So I can't second-guess it personally, because, you know, none of us are professional educators, but what I think we can do is hold to account the progress that we do make, and so what I might suggest is, as we have something like this, put it in context for us, so that we understand what are the things that have actually been accomplished. So if we know we're going to have a dip, we try to plan for it, which is kind of what I'm hearing, but also, where did we actually succeed? So that would be the part that I would say on something like this. Last time I said this, and I'll say the same thing tonight, a couple spots, some of these things are a bit of a leap of faith, but we really can't second-guess that, but we can hold you accountable, as I heard, and I think that's the part. What is improving and who's accountable? So those would be the things that I would be looking for.
Dr. Rossberg?
So I add that the adoption of the curriculum also requires the district to modify the schedule and FTE, so that work has already been done. All the principals are supportive of the initiative, and we did obviously have a, have a decrease in scores, but students were still in the 92% spot for growth, and so I do think that we can implement this next year with minimal dip in scores, depending on the school, depending on the teachers and the work that they do with the curriculum team.
So, I go, so let's say you have a new principal start in a middle school, so, and you, then do you have to kind of start over with that, or, I mean, or there, I suppose it depends on who that replacement is.
We are in the people business.
Okay.
So, yeah, so everything is contingent on people, and they're still set.
And my, my point is it, is that a curriculum change like this needs, needs to go on well, regardless of who's the principal.
Correct.
Because we do have principals that leave and come back, or whatever, you know, so. Okay, anybody else have questions or comments? Now I'll have the coordinator then call the roll. On the approval of middle school English language arts resource adoption?
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
The motion passes with seven yeses.
Our next item, action item, is the Insight Workforce Solutions that was presented by Mr. Zetiker. Is there a motion and a second to approve this?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Any questions, comments? Mr. Z, uh, Siegel?
Thank you.
Yeah. Almost called you Mr. Zetiker.
I'd be flattered.
Okay.
But speaking of Mr. Zetiker, he did send out an email, bringing up the metrics, showing the anticipated and hoped-for effectiveness of insight in being able to fill subparas and teachers. And I'm sorry I didn't respond earlier, my email inbox got a little crowded subsequent to you sending that email, and it slid down to about the 12th page. Had it had the outline about bus drivers, I may have picked it up. Anyway, when this was first presented to us, we were told that the budget would end up, end up being pretty neutral on this, if we could get about a 50% fill rate on subparas, and I forget what the, what it was with, with teachers. Subsequently, we were told by the, by the bidder that, or the vendor, that he had hoped to maybe get that up to 30%, and at my last one-on-one with the superintendent, he and I had a discussion about, you know, is this something I was really going to support? And he had, you know, we kind of discussed it. For me, it was really kind of a wash mathematically, and then we got the email, and you're looking at about a 25% fill rate on the subparas. I guess I've got it in my head that, at, at that point, I'm, I'm almost feeling like, why bother? What they're offering us as a solution was to find three and a half substitutes for every opening within our market, that in, our market can't really support the need as it is. And they're going to go through some initiatives of going out and trying to find people who can fill these positions by attending events that are school-related. So I, I appreciate that they have some interest in me, and we'll go out and find those, those folks, but I wasn't struck by anything extraordinary that they were going to do that 205, is one of the largest employers in the region, couldn't already do itself without having to pay the premium for every substitute teacher and para. As far as outsourcing goes on a, you know, philosophical level, you know, we have talked about this as, you know, if it's not part of our core competency, do we, you know, do we get too worked up about outsourcing? But actually putting adults in the classroom, that really is part of our core competency, and we are directly touching the students in an academic way. So I think that this is something where we, we do look at this and say, this really is our responsibility. I know that we do outsource for things like speech therapists and other really high-level, hard-to-fill positions, but our difficulty in filling, especially the subparas, is really one of, of an economic factor, rather than a particular education factor. I guess this is just a really super-long-winded way of saying, at this point, the effectiveness of what the vendor offers, I'm just inclined to vote for this.
Okay. If I could respond? In terms of the, the initial percentages, those were just drawn up to show the board what the cost could be in terms of being cost-neutral. Those percentages, we could adjust those up and down. So those, those first percentages were just really to illustrate kind of the billing and what we already do pay in terms of both salary benefits, and so that's why you see the fluctuation, that the first ones weren't meant to show that if we, we only, it, it will be cost-neutral if only we hit these certain percentages. Those were just to illustrate to the board what that billing structure would look like. So in terms of the metrics that I sent out, we had discussions in terms of just the first year metrics, and I thought it was unrealistic for us to go from a 15% to a 30% in one year, although the goal is to gradually increase that. And so that's why you see a 25% metric in terms of the para fill rate. And so I think in terms of the metrics, I wanted to be flexible and versatile in the way that we evaluate their services, whether that is the recruitment, the retention. I think part of what they also bring is the professional development that they can give to their employees. They may be able to run incentive programs in terms of more preparations for the testing that the paras have to take to become a full-time para. So there's, again, that job career that's built in there, and so, but the para population will be the largest challenge, there's no question. But that just, I guess goes to just, I want to explain the difference in the percentages for your, for your knowledge.
Thank you. Mr. Connor?
So I have a different view on it. I don't think this is about money, and I'll say that right up front, at least for me. This is really about, you know, where do we focus? And I think it's been very interesting, the administration, from my point of view, has been transparent, that we have not done such a good job managing the subs, particularly the teachers. And so we have two core issues. One is what I've called sort of the incidental, which means somebody calls at 4:00 in the morning the day before, and it's, it's the job of this particular vendor to have a better response to that. And so I think there's an accountability for this. This is their core business. They do this for a living, they, they have people, and unlike the misinformation that has gone about, the fact is that if you're a sub today, you can be a sub tomorrow. It's just a matter of, you know, how is all this coordinated? And this is their focus, they coordinate on this. So from my point of view, that is one of the values, so. And then the second issue with teachers is what I'll call the structural issues, which are, there are some schools that have perennial issues. This group nor any other would not really address that. That is a separate issue that we're going to have to address, I think. This might help, and there might be some things where we can have a better situation, but the fact that we have somebody focused and they use the same software we use. So that coordination effort to a larger pool of people will be available, and they are committed to training and bringing people along, so this is their focus, and that's, I think there's a quality difference there. And when I read through the performance metrics, onboarding events, new active substitutes, fill rate, placement increase, those are the right kinds of things, and we hold them to account. We have the right kind of contract, and we make sure that we hold them accountable. And that's on us, and what I'll say is that we are, we are doing this because we have said, it hasn't always worked the best, and I think I applaud that transparency and honesty, and it seems to me that this is a viable option for us to have somebody really focused on this, because this is an important issue. And I would also agree that I think the paras are the hardest, but the fact is, let's start also with the teachers and recognize that this is something that will help us in a situation I think that's very critical.
Dr. Jarrett?
Thank you, Mr. Connor. I would, I would also like to just add, number one, this is a low, I think part of the reason I think it is worth giving this a try- I think it is worth giving this a try is because it is a low barrier to entry business that if, for whatever reason, the contract does not go as expected, I don't, it's something where I think we have the opportunity to see if this group can outperform, and I think it's a business we could get back into. Two, when I'm out in buildings, I consistently hear concerns from teachers that this is one of the barriers to student achievement because of lost planning time. I constantly hear about the frustration with internal subbing, and if we can even move the needle five to seven points, that would make a big difference in some buildings. And then three, Mrs. Holdley, one of the things, I would just pull you into the conversation, there is some benefit risk. As we increasingly go to the same number of substitutes, the state has given us more flexibility for people to substitute teach more days, but with that comes risk that we will incur risks that people, that we don't intend to provide benefits as substitute teachers start to qualify for benefits. That's built into this company's strategy by having people be more full-time in the subbing approach, and that's something they've worked into it. And we had a couple of pretty big scares where we've been worried about, you know, gosh, are we counting hours properly? And do we want to have a bill where all of a sudden we have 100 employees that all of a sudden we owe benefits to? Mrs. Holdley, if you could speak to that risk, I would appreciate it.
There it goes.
I think that the substitute entity certainly has a lot more controls in place and the systems in place to ensure that individuals who work sporadically or intermittently, that they are awarded benefits when they are entitled to such benefits. For example, under the Affordable Care Act, there is a look-back period that you have to take into consideration, and the entity that we would be contracting with, they are much better equipped to do things like that than we are.
So if we're assuming that we could get slight improvement, but if we don't, we can always get back into this business. And two, we offload, I think, some fairly significant risk because we're starting to have increased pressure to have substitutes in our building, no matter who we use. I like offloading that risk, so for those reasons, I feel very strongly about supporting this. I think we have lots of opportunities to get back into the business if it doesn't work the way we hope.
Mr. Siegel?
Looking at what Insight is offering to do to increase the number of fills, looks an awful lot like the responsibilities that a standard HR department would bear in a decent-sized organization. So that they are going to offer to do these things doesn't really strike me as something special, when it's something that the organization could and should do itself. As far as the risk of running into benefits, I look at that from two ways. If we are actually risking paying people benefits, it's probably because they have filled so many of those vacancies, we've now just also achieved some stability. And while maybe this organization or Insight is going to be better at finding more of that stability and bearing the cost of the insurance, or helping their employees bear the cost of the insurance, it can't be overlooked that if we have to bear that cost, we are achieving extra stability. And when they're offering us such modest increase in fill, have we looked to see just exactly if we were able to achieve the same fill ourselves, how much we would pay out in benefits?
Well, it wouldn't be just the health benefits as well, and for our non-certified subs, they're also hit a threshold for IMRF and IMRF contributions, which also then entitle them to sick days and other federal, state regulations. And so we're running, because of the shortage and the amount of hours we're asking our substitute to work, not only are we talking about the health benefits, but the other IMRF benefits where now we have to take money out of the subs' check to contribute, and then we, as a district, have to contribute on top of that, plus the entitlement of potential sick days for our substitute teachers. So I think if we're talking the benefits piece, there are several aspects to look at in terms of our risk and/or reward in terms of not having that to, I guess, worry about, and in terms of the district, in terms of financial cost.
Mrs. McCullough?
Could you remind me, our fill rate for subs to teachers right now, is it 79, and they're going to do 85%?
In the first year.
And what is our sub-fill rate for para's right now?
15%.
And they're going to do 25%? And it's only for para's and teachers? There's no principals involved in this?
HR will continue to do clerical and administrators.
And do we do sub-psych or sub-speech or sub in any other areas?
Not typically in that. We do have, obviously, sub-nurses that was voted on, but in terms of some of those other positions, we typically do not.
Mrs. Holdley?
Actually, you do. You have contracts where you've contracted out.
Yes.
So those are, so they're not employees, but they're not just subbing in for days where people are missing. We do a contract, and they do a consistent fill throughout the district, yeah. My last question is, and maybe we covered this, and we've had a lot of conversation, but by taking this work away from HR, what kind of reduction in HR staffing will we see? What will the save be on that?
Yep. Right now, we're not budgeting for any reduction in staffing, but looking at reallocating duties to assist in other areas of HR for efficiencies.
Because we have open positions in HRs that aren't, HR that aren't filled? I guess I would have thought we'd save some money because now we don't have people filling all these positions. I mean, we've got a company that's going to be doing that, we're taking it away from us. Why would we not be saving money in that area?
Because we have other areas in HR that we can use manpower to improve processes and to get better at what we currently do. Some of those areas may be some more support around benefits in that area, our hiring and increasing our turnaround time to meet goals. So we, you know, we're certainly working hard, but by no means are we where we want to be in terms of HR and goals. And so this frees up the opportunity to take personnel and to be able to address other areas within our department.
Okay, thank you. I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the Insight Workforce Solutions.
Mr. Siegel?
No.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
No.
Mr. Dixon?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Motion passes with four yeses.
Thank you. Our next item is the Illinois Empower Schools Plans and Learning Partners that Dr. Munson presented last board meeting. Is there a motion and a second to approve this item?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mrs. McCullough. Any questions or comments? Mr. Escobedo?
Sorry, left word.
All right, okay. Mr. Connor?
Yeah, I asked several questions, and both of Dr. Munson and Dr. Vosberg, and basically, one of the things I asked is what's at stake for us to go through this right now, and I guess that we have to submit some of the plans by the 28th, so we do have some deadlines here. I asked them about Semitive and what that really meant, and essentially I got the answer that there's a whole bunch of stuff in there. And one of the suggestions I made transparently is, and it may, it could be just me, but as a board member, I would like to know more. And even though I'm inclined to approve this, I think that, again, the accountability to know more about what's going on here mechanically, what we're really doing, I think is important. This is a big state program, it's $1.3 million, and so this is something that we're really, we're putting ourselves out there for a couple of years, and so I think it's important for the board. So that's why, from my point of view, more than anything, the point is that we've got a lot at stake here, there's a lot going on, there's a lot of money, and we need to be closer to this. I think there's, frankly, a lot going on. So I did ask those, and I'll just comment that, one of the comments I made also was, there were so many materials, there was one, almost 350-page report that showed all the schools, and there were 16, and then 12, and I started to read through part of it, and each one was comprehensive, but it's, what I'll just say is that we do this as part-time volunteers, and lord knows, you know, that'd have been a full-time job just to go through that document. So I said, there was really a lot of material here. And I said last time that this, again, is a leap of faith, and there's got to be an accountability, and I think part of it's on the board, to really have our finger on this one, and for us to learn more. And if it's just me, then great, I'll take my time that I do here and sit in Dr. Munson's office, and she can tell me if nobody else is interested, but I think there is a lot here. And what I will say is, obviously, at least from my point of view, there are some standards, there are some things that are very specific, and one of the things I did, give feedback to both Dr. Munson and Dr. Vosberg, was we better have the right metrics on this one, because there's a lot of terminology, there are state standards, and how we do in meeting that really, I think, really is going to be important. All of us want to make sure that achievement, particularly the achievement gap, is addressed, and this seems like it's a real step forward on this, but we've got to make sure, this is a lot of money, and that it's being spent right, and that's a great part on us.
Dr. Munson, did you want to comment on that?
Sure. Well, two things that we're asking you to approve tonight, and we do understand it's very extensive. The first one, in the document that Mr. Connors is referring to, are the state-required school plans. So all of the schools that were designated in the bottom two tiers are required to fill the compliance forms from the state. So those are the forms that you have received today for your review. The second part are two of the contracts, which are Illinois Learning Partners that we are required to work with, and so we are asking you to look at the first two contracts. One contract, DMG, you've already approved. We're asking you to look at ACR and ROE tonight, which are two contracts we are ready to move forward on, feeling the sense of urgency and sharing the sense of urgency that you have stated and shared. We would like to get this work up and running as soon as possible. And the work is reflected in each of the work plans that you have. But we do understand they're comprehensive. The schools also had to undergo an extraordinarily comprehensive self-assessment that was due on January 31st, that did not need to be board-approved, that was already submitted to the state. After your approval of all of these school forms or all the school plans, the state of Illinois also has to approve each individual plan itself, and that will begin on the 28th of February.
Dr. Jarrett?
Mr. Connor and I had an email exchange as well, just building on this, and one thing that he asked, you know, with this huge expenditure, will we be able to revisit? And I think there are two primary ways you're going to have this revisited. One, a number of these contracts will come before you for approval. Two, and I think most significantly, Mrs. Yar and her team have worked out a budget worksheet, and as we approve site-based budgets for all of our schools at the April Committee of the whole meeting, we'll have a chance to break those out. You will not only be able to see the column of how schools are investing these Illinois Empower funds, you'll be able to see what they had for Title I funds, you'll be able to see what they had for our, any innovation or incentive-based programs, what they did with site-based budgeting. There will be actually five different columns. So this will really be, in some cases, about a fifth of the new dollars. Not every school in our district will have this column on those budgets, but what I think is going to be most important for the board is to see, when you add those five funding sources up that were discretionary for schools on top of their base package, what are they investing in to move the needle on student achievement? And I think that opportunity to revisit, which Mr. Connor pointed out correctly is a really important concept, I think is going to come back to the board. So this is not an all-or-nothing situation. We need to get these plans off to the state, and then you're going to have a chance at the April Committee of the Whole to really see how every school is attacking their school improvement process for next year by using this fund source along with four or five other significant fund sources as well. So I would encourage the board to provide that support to move forward with this proposal for this evening. We are frankly also at a deadline, and in many cases, I would be falling on the sword and saying, gosh, we're sorry. In this case, I really think this was as fast as, with the work it took, with the very short notice we got from the state, this was about as fast as we could get it, and you could see that in that 350-page document, how much work the schools had to do and how much heavy lifting this took to get it here. So we would have loved for you to have longer. We did bring that to the Committee of the Whole two weeks ago, but we had a lot going that night, a lot of other weighty, meaty objects that probably, by the time we got there, we probably didn't have as much discussion two weeks ago as we normally would. So I do apologize for that, that there's been so much to cover in the last few weeks. The snow and the constant bad weather has probably contributed to that as well, but it really is important that I think we get this to the state so that we can move forward with the big picture in future meetings. But I think this is, I think our schools are going to be using this along with other items really well.
Mr. Siegel?
So will DMG be doing two different prongs of work with the school district next year? One on academic return on investment and in this work?
Right. So this is already approved, that expenditure has already been approved. And the two work streams are, number one, work stream is building our district capacity around academic return on investment. So that's where we're going to see the impact on future Plan Do Study Act issues that are brought, topics that are brought forward for board approval pertaining to Goal One. You will also see three projects per year where we will do large assessments of dollars, and then three, you'll see the budget, you'll also see the budgetary process impacted. Another piece of that will really directly help our schools is, as they continue to get these dollars, that strategic budgeting proposal, which is the second work stream, is going to support our schools as they work directly with these dollars to come up with, making sure that we really are strategic and maximize the investments at the school level as well. So I would look at work stream one as a way to make sure we are spending our money as wisely as we can at the district office, so we have extra dollars to give to schools. And I would say work stream two is all about making sure our principals feel properly trained to invest those dollars at the site level as those dollars arrive. So those two things will happen, and these state dollars are very valuable. We have a real opportunity to, I mean, these are substantial enough, in many cases, it's $100,000 or $115,000 for some of our schools on the list, so these are big dollars that can really make a difference.
Thank you, Dr. Jarrett. Okay? All right, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the Illinois Empower School Plans and Learning Partners.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Motion passes with seven yeses.
Thank you. We are now on to new business, and administration has asked us to suspend parliamentary rules to forego its two-reading rule for this agenda item, thereby approving the new playgrounds at Ellis, McIntosh, and Westview Elementary Schools. Administration requests to suspend this rule as a result of grant funding that expires March 12, 2019, for the Illinois Parks and Recreation Association grant for the purchase of this equipment. So this item is for the approval of the going in to suspend the rules. So can I have a motion on that first?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. I don't think we have discussion on that. Any discussion on that motion?
Administration knows that we all hate this.
Okay.
Just saying.
But there's a deadline.
For suspension, is it just for this once? That's what we're approving for, just one time?
Right. Yep, just this item. Yep. Okay, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval to suspend the rules.
Mr. Escobedo?
Step down.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one absent.
So now I need a motion and a second to approve the new playgrounds for Ellis, McIntosh, and Westview.
So moved.
By Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Questions or discussion? Are we having a presentation on this?
You can.
We can?
No, we don't need it.
We don't need it?
For God's sake.
Okay, we're all good with this?
So they did send the materials out?
They did.
And I looked at it. So I have an overall comment on this one, which is, when it comes to the deferred maintenance and the rest of it, I guess, so these three playgrounds, he sent the pictures, and they're in bad shape, and we really, for the safety of the kids at those schools, we absolutely, this is even overdue. But the more general question, which you don't have to answer tonight, though, I think is, how are we going to account for all this as a district-wide initiative? In other words, is this part of our checklist?
In other words, is this part of our checklist like we have with tuck pointing and roof and all the rest? Because I would want to make sure that the playgrounds, I mean, safety for the kids is number one. So I just, I really want to make sure that that is in context, because clearly, we have to do this.
Mr. Connor, to your question, yes, we do have a list of playgrounds prioritized. These were three of the top priorities, but we do have others identified as we move forward.
If I might say so, in the same manner, again, like roof and so forth, that we know what years it's going to be here, rough cost, et cetera.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Now I'll have Courtney then call the role.
Can I piggyback on that? So those spreadsheets that tell us what years, you know, the different roofs need to be repaired, and there's a sheet on playgrounds. Okay. And where are those on our website? It must be under...
I think you need to push the button again.
Currently, I do not believe those are on our website.
Because somebody said they were going to put them on there a while back, remember?
I believe we actually presented them, as I recall, during the Capitol Plan presentation, and so I thought they were on board docs already, but...
If they're on board docs, they're buried in a meeting.
I do, the life cycle for roofs, windows, tuck pointing, those were...
Hardscape, painting.
Correct. Those were part of our Capitol project presentation. I don't recall if the playgrounds were, if, I will look into that. If they're not, I will get them posted.
Yeah, I just don't ever remember seeing one. So if you're saying that it exists, it would be good to have, and also just a link to where we go to find all of those.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll have the Courtney then call the role on the approval of the playgrounds.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo? The motion passes with six yeses and one absent.
Mrs. French? How come we always have you last? We save the best for last, right? You're going to talk to us about pathway sponsorship.
Good evening. My name is Bridgette French. I'm the Executive Director of College and Career readiness. I'm here to talk to you tonight about pathway sponsorships. So as you know, work-based learning is a key component to our high school academies. Work-based learning brings relevance to the classroom and engages students in meaningful ways. The problem is, not all of our students are, at all grade levels, are getting work-based learning opportunities. We are only fully implementing a minimal number of external experiences for all students. As you know, we host with our partners, Alignment Rockford, the Academy Expo, and sophomore site visits. This year, we've piloted job shadows for 11th graders at East. However, we don't currently have the capacity to expand. While we have deep engagement for some business partners, others are on the periphery. Often, we're calling around, trying to find a business to help, rather than leveraging a strategic approach to business engagement. We've developed a work-based learning continuum with our partners from the community, with student input, and with our building teams. We've determined four critical experiences that we want all students to have. We want 95% of our students to have an experience at the Academy Expo, a site visit in 10th grade, a job shadow as a junior, an apprenticeship or an internship, and/or capstone experience as a senior. These are also a part of our high school scorecard in the climate and culture strand. Our solution is to partner with Alignment Rockford to allow businesses to sponsor our pathways. Alignment Rockford will work with business partners to secure sponsorships for pathways at our schools. Students will gain access to employers, and as they, those employers become connected to the school, they will provide career experiences for our students. With 12 to 14 pathways at each of our five high schools, this allows for a strategic alignment of sponsors to pathways. One sponsorship pays for one pathway at a school, or the opportunity to combine with other organizations to sponsor a pathway. Businesses may sponsor more than one school, but we'll work closely with Alignment Rockford to ensure we have equity among our five high schools. Alignment Rockford has been working with Chartwell Agency to develop some sample signage for our schools. We met with building principals and administrators at their schools to discuss the concepts and ideas. And here are some more concepts for signage. Pending board approval, we have a few partners in support of the pathway sponsorship concept. You heard from Mary Tom McNamara earlier tonight. Thank you, Mayor, for being here in support of our initiative. The city of Rockford has been really instrumental in the development of our public safety pathway. And additionally, they have financially supported the precious plastics project at Roosevelt. Collins Aerospace is interested in becoming a pathway sponsor for engineering. An associated bank is interested in sponsoring a business pathway at a high school. Alternative choices, including bringing the work in-house, would mean that we would have to hire either more academy coaches or work-based learning coordinators, and we currently don't have the funds to do that. We also think it's important that the work-based learning coordinators, who will help coordinate these business experiences for our students, work for Alignment Rockford, having the ability to really focus on creating these experiences for our students every day. The other alternative would be to continue status quo, and that would mean not all students would have access to all work-based learning opportunities. There's no cost to RPS 205. Alignment Rockford incurs all the cost of signage and any advertising costs for the sponsors. We will assess the situation through decision ed in our high school scorecard metrics. And Alignment Rockford will measure employment engagement data after employer, employers host experiences for students. Again, these are the metrics that will be on the high school scorecard by measuring each student experience completed. The return on investment is about student success. Work-based learning is a critical component to student success and engagement in their academy and in learning. We'll report back through regularly monitoring our data dashboards, and Alignment Rockford has regular processes that allow them to really determine the engagement of our employers after each experience they work with our students. With that, I am happy to take any questions you may have. Anisha Grimmett, the Executive Director of Alignment Rockford, is also here, in the event you have questions for her as well.
Those are the twins back there.
Yeah. Mr. Connor?
So I think it's a good idea. One of the questions I've got, though, is, we have a lot of small businesses, so I think, you know, have you thought about how they could play, you know, would you group by some?
She said they would group.
But, I mean, I know, but, you know, how would you?
We have actually thought about it. Yes. So as you know, the school district currently contributes $70,000 a year to Alignment Rockford. That amount will help offset the cost of any, for example, not-for-profits that might want to be a sponsor in a school. So for example, the Rockford Symphony Orchestra is really involved in our high schools. They are on our academy support teams, but because they're a not-for-profit, perhaps they might not have the funding available to participate. That's where the school district's funding would help offset the cost to allow them to become a sponsor.
And do we, is there any anticipation of success in the sense of, so I'm thinking the trades today, one of the things we do is we get, say, kids from the machine class or whatever who get hired. Would we expect that, you know, some of those opportunities would increase because of the pathway sponsorships?
It's hard to say. We do know that at Jefferson, circle boring has been extremely instrumental in the machining class there, and they have hired quite a few students direct out of that class. So we would hope that that would be sort of an ancillary benefit of this. Absolutely.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes. I think this is a great opportunity. I guess I only have one concern is that we understand that there are some entities that are more popular than others, and some schools may participate while others cannot. Is there something that we can do to spread or to make it more equal to the four high schools?
Yes, absolutely. That is a key component of our plan, is to ensure that all schools will have the opportunity to work with a business sponsor. When we pilot this, we're going to work with the business sponsors, especially three that we mentioned there, to disperse them throughout the high schools. We're not going to start all at one school. In addition to the three that I mentioned, we have another one kind of in the pipeline. So we'll really have one for each school to start out with, and we're really excited about that. So yes, equity among our schools is a high priority for us.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. This will be presented to the board at our March 12 meeting for a vote. Is there any other business for tonight? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. All those in favor say aye. If you oppose the same sign, we are adjourned at 8:45.